No, just glad you're here.
Thank you, sorry, I had a meeting with the board.
No worries, it's all gonna go according to plan.
Yes, I'm ready, sir.
Oh, did you talk to Antonio about this?
Now, welcome to the June 11th, 2025, 6:30 PM Lowell School Committee Regular Meeting. So, saluting the flag. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Doherty.
Here.
Mr. Lay.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mayor Rourke.
Here.
Mr. Bahu.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Ms. O'Rossi.
Here.
Seven present.
Section 3, Special Order of Business 3.1, Spotlight on Excellence, Katie's Closet, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Rourke and School Committee members, if I were to tell you that Katie's Closet has done untold good and benefit in our community, I think that that would be very accurate, but we have tonight Spotlight on Excellence featuring Katie's Closet, so we can do away with the untold part. And to do some of that telling, we have none other than Mickey Cotrell, the executive director of Katie's Closet, who will be addressing us. Ms. Cotrell.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for this opportunity to present the work of Katie's Closet to you. Katie's Closet has been serving the children of Lowell for 15 years. The organization was inspired by two pivotal moments. First, my niece Katie, a passionate student in Lowell schools who believed education should be a right, not a privilege. Despite living with a rare illness that led to 40 surgeries over 20 years, Katie aspired to be a writer and made a lasting impact by championing inclusion and understanding. She noticed classmates who disappeared, many of them struggling with poverty and homelessness, and it deeply affected her. The second moment came when a Lowell Sun article exposed the harsh realities faced by two homeless students living near a bridge. The piece revealed that attending school was nearly impossible for kids lacking basic necessities. Katie, when her mom asked if she knew homeless students at Lowell High, replied simply, "Yeah, Mom, but they just want to be like everybody else. They just want to go to school." Three months later, Katie passed away, but her insight and compassion live on through Katie's Closet, which was founded in her memory to ensure that no child has to choose between fitting in and showing up to learn. So, our mission today is Katie's Closet gives children in need life-changing access to clothing and basic necessities, so they can thrive in school and in life. Our goal, a confident student, which leads to a confident school and a confident school district, confident city. How it works, we have three pathways for serving students. First, we build in-school closets. This is a free store located in every public school. Where 50% or more of the student population comes from families living in poverty, and we know all schools in Lowell qualify for that. We have a special order system to take care of exceptional needs, but our second main program is an SOS Urgent Response Program. We partner with all of our schools and social service partners to support children who are transitioning between stable living conditions. This includes homelessness, foster care, newcomers, fire victims, and survivors of traumatic and abusive situations. You're seeing on your screen some pictures of closets. They may look different based on the age and size of a building, but what you will see is consistency. All the clothing tops are hung, the bottoms are folded, colorful buckets of toiletries, but a pure shopping experience, where students have the agency to choose and shop on demand, take as much as they need whenever they need it. We're a very unique resource. We're actually the only organization of its kind in Massachusetts and in the nation that provides on-demand access to clothing and basic necessities right where kids are. It's a sensitive and discreet experience, the doors are locked, and it's a facilitated visit, where trusted faculty and school staff escort a child into the closet so that they can get what they need. The secret sauce of Katie's Closet is relationship building. When a student enters that closet, they call it their safe space, and they see that one of their biggest challenges being met, they open up about the other challenges that are affecting them, and school staff can then navigate what's next. We do have shoes. It's not in the closet, just because there are 54 sizes and nobody would give me a second room, but maybe someday. So, we provide 1,500 items in that closet, and all the ones that you see are highlighted in blue are what we spend money on. We only provide brand-new underwear, socks, full-size toiletries, shoes, and winter coats, but we often have to supplement through inventory gaps the other items you see highlighted in blue. How we do this is a central distribution center. It's a hub-and-spoke model. Here, this distribution center in Drakett collects new and gently-used clothes, and then we funnel it out to the schools via our closet champions who act as store managers. Our history with Lowell Public Schools, we actually have 30 closets in Lowell, and that is because the freshman academy and the main building each have one, as well as the school district office. Lowell serves 14,457 kids, and we serve 10,295 of them. But we're available to all students, so whether a student newly becomes in need, that is at the discretion of the school, and as I said, we have a 15-year partnership. Here's a list of all the schools. There's two under Addy Day because the high school students just moved over to the Ol' Jean Doc Building. And we're always servicing our, surveying our partners, and these two first ones really hit home. Out of 800 students surveyed, 710 were wearing something from Katie's Closet or had visited Katie's Closet that day. The second principal told us that she would have sent 36 students home because of dress code, and we know that affects chronic absenteeism, but because of Katie's Closet, she didn't have to. Our investment in LPS is large. It costs $25,000 to run an elementary school for a year, and that, again, provides unlimited access for each student. And $50,000 for a high school just because of sheer numbers of students. We take about half of that to purchase the brand-new items the school needs, those underwear, socks, full-size toiletries, et cetera, and the other half in running the program, processing new and gently-used items and transporting it to each school. So, that's $775,000 annually. We also spent another $120,000 on the SOS program, especially with the newcomers this year. So, you'll see the average value per inventory. We have to put a value on all of our clothing in that distribution center, and we do it at thrift rates, which is a good blend between new goods and gently-used. So, we begin each closet with 20,000 to 33,000 based on size. We turn the inventory twice. We purchase new goods, and so the total value every single year to Lowell Public Schools is $2.6 million. So, imagine 30 in-school closets, that's 775,000 per year. We've invested over $8 million into the city, and up until this school year have done it free of charge. So, again, our collective goal is to make sure every student feels confident enough to go to school, that we break that cycle of chronic absenteeism, we improve graduation rates, and we make sure every single child feels valued and belongs. Going forward, it's going to be really important for us to work together to ensure the sustainability of the program, especially as, just like you, our budget has been radically affected. But thank you. Thank you for your attention and your time, and I look forward to working with everyone again next year.
Ms. Doherty.
Thank you. I just want to say, as someone who remembers the beginning of Katie's Closet, it is so wonderful to see how the program has grown and the impact it's had, and I think it's an amazing tribute to a very special young woman. So, you should be so proud of that work.
Mr. Lay.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Mickey, I just want to say that I had the privilege to accompany with Senator Kennedy to your grand opening on Loon Hill Road in Drakett, and we thought that the warehouse is amazing. You have a lot of stuff, and you did an amazing job organizing everything in order, but we never had an idea, how would you decide which item would go to which school, and then how would you bring them to the schools?
That's great. First of all, a 30-year career. Thank you for that. First of all, the 30-year career in retail really helps me a lot. I, prior to this, was a vice president for Kohl's, opening all those Kohl's stores. But we look at the demographics of each school, and then we look at the age and the average size, and then we try to match that. So, if a school is, has a large Asian population or Hispanic population, then we know culturally they're looking for certain things, and I think that's part of that special sauce, again, that we really try to match what we need. And then we have a truck that goes to all the schools in Lowell every single week, and we drop it off.
Well, thank you, and thank you for what you've done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Moving on, 3.2, Spotlight on Excellence, as a recognition of the 2024-2025 retirees. We did have a reception at 5:30 this afternoon in the man's reception room honoring those retirees for Lowell Public Schools for this year, so just to thank them for their service and wish them the best of luck. Moving on, section four of the minutes, motion to approve the special and regularly-scheduled Lowell School Committee meeting minutes on May 14th, May 21st, May 24th, and placed them on file by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. Alvin Ferris, AI, opposed, motion passes. Section 5, permission to enter, 5.1, June 11th, 2025, motion to approve the permission by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Bahu. Questions? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. O'Rossi?
Yes.
Seven years.
Section 6, Memorial, 6.1, Mark McKellar, teacher at the Ballack Community Partnership School, K-8. Madam Clerk, please, the lights. May I have some peace? Section 7, motion, 7.1, by Ms. O'Rossi, motion to request the superintendent collaborate with the Department of Public Health to provide a report detailing the number of students and staff at each school who are experiencing respiratory conditions, including but not limited to asthma, seconded by Ms. Doherty, Ms. O'Rossi.
Yes. This problem stems from, obviously, the major concern of the Pawtucket Memorial, but not only the Pawtucket Memorial, it's many other schools that can see mold growing. I saw a picture of a glue stick with mold adhered to it. That means something is dripping somewhere, and we need to find the source. But these people are also experienced, experiencing respiratory conditions that they may never have had prior to working in the buildings. I know I work in a compromised building, my own self, and I've had situations in my own experience that have caused me to create asthma, and it's difficult as you get older. And it's not a born condition. It's not easy to ever have asthma, but I just think it's important to look at the numbers. Students and staff who are experiencing respiratory conditions, and no matter what, like who's getting Flu A, Flu B? How rampant is it in the buildings? Asthma, bronchitis, what is the absent rate? It's a serious concern, not only at the Pawtucket Memorial, throughout the district.
Alvin Ferris, AI, Madam Superintendent, good.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I don't want to interject on the motion, per se, but I always feel obligated to inform the committee when you're going to vote about the possible impacts. It's a, the concern that's in the motion is a genuine concern, and it's well felt. The responding to the motion might be problematic, so there may be people in our schools who have asthma. It's got nothing to do with the environment, and so we won't know that, and we won't be able to report on that. I'm also not sure how we will determine whether people, if we can go through our records, for example, or if we were to say survey staff, but it could be problematic, and I wanted to point that out.
What if I made an amendment to say current onset respiratory issues? Because this is a serious issue within our buildings. So, I, in, I'm telling you also at the same time that it's happening in not only Lowell, but other districts. It happens in older buildings, and I've experienced it my own self, but just current onset, as a motion, I just put it as the numbers, right? Clearly understanding that there are various types of asthma. My own child has a type of asthma that only exasperates when he's sick or allergy-induced, and it's very scary. I mean, we need to get some type of baseline.
Thank you. I guess my suggestion might be to ask the public, Department of Public Health, to come to one of our meetings and report for us or with us, and then ask them what else we might be able to do.
Whether we have them in a meeting or as a report. Thank you.
Ms. Martin, go ahead.
I was just going to say, because I share the concerns around this issue, but I think we might be best served to defer to the expertise of the Health Department, that if we could, I think in passing this motion, we'd be asking the administration to reach out to the Health Department to, again, whether they meet with us in person or whatnot, let them know what it is we're looking for, to tell us the best way to approach this, because I do think that there could be an opportunity to, you know, to do this kind of study and just, you know, one school doesn't tell us anything. We'd need to be able to do it across the board. There may be an opportunity to work with, whether it's the university or some other organization, that the Health Department would be, quite honestly, much better versed in being able to kind of reach out to see if there's an opportunity to conduct this kind of study that could be part of, perhaps, something larger, you know, part of the larger public health conversation. But I think, I think, to your point, Ms. O'Rossi, you really want to have us connect with the Health Department so they can guide us in terms of what the next steps would be, because I think that would be the most effective, rather than us trying to come up with it, you know, if you'd be comfortable with that.
Yes.
Alvin Ferris, AI, opposed, motion passes, 7.2, by Ms. O'Rossi, motion to request that the superintendent provide a report on the operational status and maintenance needs of copy machines in each building, seconded by Mr. Bahu, Ms. O'Rossi.
Yes, I'm hearing that there's major issues in various schools throughout the district, so I'd just like kind of a report on what's happening. Also, I'm hearing about an update that has happened in one of our operating systems that has stalled the printing for various reports. So, if we can just get a report on the basic health of our copy machines, I know we've had one in the past, and things seem to have resolved their issue, but just to get an update.
Alvin Ferris, AI, opposed, motion passes. 7.3, Mr. Bahu, have the school committee conduct a superintendent evaluation based on state guidelines, seconded by Mr. Conway, Mr. Bahu.
Sure. We've had a interim superintendent for just about one year, and then ultimately a full-term superintendent, which of course is Mr. Skinner, and it seems like he's, you know, essentially completing his second year. Here we are in June, school getting out, just about, you know, a week from now, and it's important that we sort of have an evaluation of our superintendent to all share our thoughts on his performance, how he's doing, and meet, meeting the state criteria to go ahead and do that. So, this motion essentially speaks for itself. I know we probably need a subcommittee to do it, but, you know, I'm willing to go ahead and be a part of that.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I do think that the, this is certainly the time when we start pulling together this effort. I would say that there's an option, we've done it in a couple different ways. In the past, the, at times, the mayor has taken kind of the lead role in orchestrating the evaluation, and at other times, it's been managed by the Personnel Subcommittee. As the chair of the Subcommittee, I'd be happy to do it, but I would defer to whatever choice you want to make, Mr. Mayor.
It's all yours.
Okay, there you go. You could have pretended to vacillate, like, "Oh, I don't know, maybe, uh..." Okay. So, with that, with that encouragement, I would say to the committee, they can look forward to getting the initial documents. We'll work both with the superintendent and his team to pull together the forms that we need to use based on the state system. Generally, what we've done is that we do the evaluation kind of over the course of the summer, and then offer the report, the full evaluation, at one of the September meetings. So, we'll pull that together, and as I say, it's conducted by the Personnel Subcommittee, but it is not limited to that committee. Every member of the committee is encouraged and expected to participate as part of the evaluation process. But I thank Mr. Bahu for the motion. Thank you.
So, should we refer to the committee tonight? A motion to refer to the Personnel Subcommittee by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Bahu, Alvin Ferris, AI, opposed, motion passes. 7.4, by Mr. Lay, request a report on staffing levels for science teaching positions at Lowell High School for the next two years versus the last two years. Also, are we cutting a physics position? If so, is another science teacher being added? What was the reason for this decision? It's a motion, right, seconded by Mr. Bahu, Mr. Lay.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So, a group of high school students have approached me and inspired me for this motion. So, I want to thank those students for getting involved and also care for the schools. I understand there may be, we don't want to go into detail in terms of personnel, but I think this motion, if superintendent could answer these, all these questions in this motion to satisfy the students' request, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I believe I can answer the questions tonight, and Mr. Lay, then you might indicate if these answers are sufficient or if you'd prefer a report. So, there are no changes, no changes to the staffing levels for physics at the high school. The same number, I have the exact number in front of me, but the same number of physics teachers that are there today are expected to be there next school year and the year after. There's no changes to the staffing levels. Also, are we cutting a physics position? No. If so, is another, so there's no, there are no positions being cut, and so what is the reason for this decision? There's no decision being made to cut any positions in physics at the high school?
Yeah, if you could put that in writing for me, Mr. Superintendent, and have a report for next meeting.
Certainly.
Alvin Ferris, AI, opposed, motion passes. Section 8, reports to the superintendent, 8.1, strategic plan, 2025 to 2030, final version. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the committee are familiar at this point with the fact that we've put together a strategic plan. It, the work continued right through the school year, and we are very proud to have, I think we presented at our last meeting the final versions. There are two versions. One is a narrative version, the other is online as slides for people to use. We, it's on the agenda tonight to hopefully receive a vote of approval by the committee. We're seeking that vote of approval so that we can adopt our new strategic plan.
Roll call, Madam Clerk. That's right. A motion to approve by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin, roll That's right, a motion to approve by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Martin, roll call.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. D'Rossi?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Eight point two, response to a motion by Mr. Conway, April 2nd, 2025, regarding Lowell High School and a Lowell-Sun partnership. Mr. Conway?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I also want to thank Ms. Crocker for the report. I appreciate it. I think that when we put this on a number of months ago, again, partnerships are so very, very important. And as I've often said, a partnership is not a one-way street, it's a two-way street. And I think in a situation like this, it can be very helpful to our students, especially, of course, at Lowell High School. And it gives them an opportunity, it gives them an opportunity to interview individuals, ask questions, consolidate information and materials, and, and again, to have that oral history, which I think is extremely important. And I hope that we continue doing this and I look forward to, occasionally I'll ask for an update on it, which I think we need. Sometimes what happens on these things, they fade depending on who comes in and then before you know it, we have to revive it. And, and I'm glad that it's, it's working well. You know, I have a question here. That very first one, Lowell High School earns third place at the 2025 Massachusetts School Bank Association Competition. Can, do you know what that threw you to, Ms. Crocker? Do you know what that was all about? I found it kind of fascinating. I'm hoping it was something that...
Ms. Crocker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. I did have an opportunity to review the submission. That one, to my knowledge, has not yet been published, so that's why you see submitted April 10th. As the mayor, I think, alluded to at one point in the meeting, not every single item that we send to the SUN gets published or gets published immediately. But there was a competition and we, we are proud to have a, be one of a handful of high schools, I think, in the area that has an actual bank inside of our high school. So the program around that banking was featured in terms of a competition, what the student's role is, what the banking does, and our students fared quite well in that. So thank you for your question.
Well, yeah, that, it caught my attention because, you know, a lot of people, adults, have, have issues with, with money. Not sure, you know, it depends and even in a household, quite often, you know, you have the, the husband will take care of the finances or the wife will take care of the finances and then all of a sudden, when that changes, you, you say to yourself, okay, what do I do here? So I, I think that's, that's an excellent, when you say third place, then hopefully maybe next year we'll be first, you know? But also, I think, the, one other quick point with this too, I think my, my, one of my goals for this going forward would be, and I think we talked about it at, at one of the meetings, that it would filter down to the middle school too, which I think is extremely important, getting them involved with it. Because now what you're doing is you're creating a feeder system, which I think is extremely important. But we have to solidify, we have to get that, that first stage done first. And once we have that, then I think we can perhaps start looking at, at bringing the middle schools into, into play. Then we could have the, the high school students be, should we say, mentors to the middle school. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Eight point three, response to a motion by Ms. D'Rossi, May 7th, 2025, regarding mental health focus advisory council. Ms. D'Rossi.
Yes, I thank you very much. Alice and Andrew Rosenshine and Sarah Brooks, I think, starting this mental health advocacy at the high school is perfect because they know the issues that their younger counterparts are experiencing and to have them build that and allow them that confidence and then to bring it to the lower grade. So I thank you very much.
Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you. I'm very much in support of this motion, but it just caused me to have a question. So through you to the administration. I know when we had talked about the health curriculum at the middle schools, I had asked a number of times about having student involvement, especially where we had done a pilot year and then we weren't really happy with the curriculum, we were making a lot of changes to it. And I'm just wondering where we stand on that. Are we, this seems like a very intentional approach to having student voices at the table and I just wanted to know if we have an update about what we're doing regarding the health curriculum and student involvement on that, and that's more at the middle school.
Ms., excuse me, Dr. Fox Roy, can you comment, please?
Ms. Dougherty, are you asking about the scope and sequence from the Subcommittee regarding the health curriculum? Is that what you were asking about?
I'm asking about the student voice, the student involvement and we had talked about having, you know, an advisory group of students weighing in on the curriculum, on what we're covering, on the way we're covering it, all part of this developing a robust middle school health curriculum. And I just was wondering if, in, you know, in reading this very intentional way of including students at the high school level, it made me think about the health curriculum. I don't know if you had any information about how the students are going to be incorporated into that curriculum, the health curriculum.
We will be incorporating student voices, but as of right now, none of the student voices were incorporated. We worked, it was the teachers that created the scope and sequence and then we're going to move from having created the scope and sequence to then sharing it and having student voice. And we'll absolutely talk with Alice and her team about how they've included the student voices in this piece.
I know they had done a survey and the first survey was done like the week before school ended and they got very little responses. I don't think each school completely bought into it or maybe because it was so late. So I'm wondering if that's what you're talking about when you say their voices were, you know, looked at or, you know, was it that survey or was there another survey done?
That survey was done, but that, and you're like, and you're correct, that there were limited voices on that survey and it was probably done towards the end of the year, but it's been about two, I think this is a set, like two years ago, I'm pretty sure that's when it happened. But they have not done a subsequent survey, but one can be, can, can be done moving forward because remember the priority for that, the curriculum was to try to create the scope and sequence that aligned across middle and high with the teachers and that's the work that they've completed at this point. But subsequently, we will be integrating student voice in what has been created.
I look forward to that update when you have it, but I don't, I mean, just reading this reminded me that that idea was very important to me at the beginning when we made the decision that every middle school was going to have a certified health teacher and that we were going to really look at, you know, a robust health curriculum for our middle school students, so, and having them be part of that. So thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Mr. Mayor, I would only add, you know, I think that, that having kind of the, you know, I applaud having the community school manager, some of the other, you know, certainly the social workers in the district. I think that's, that's a great idea to bring together for this, you know, kind of new endeavor. I'd also just offer as a recommendation, you know, the idea of bringing in some of our community partners with a real expertise in this area, whether it's Lowell Community Health Center or the hospital, you know, there are, there are a lot of different partners I know that the district works with around mental health issues. And even if they could send someone to kind of, you know, just be on this, be on this committee to bring that added level of kind of external vision to it, I think that could be really helpful because I think it would give us, you know, kind of bring in some expertise outside of our own that would, I think, could be really helpful and I think would benefit not only the, kind of the adults who are part of this, but also the students who are part of it. Thank you.
Excellent. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to add, we do actually have a, a community behavioral health task force that we have a number of community partners on, so it'd actually be an easy intersection. I think it's a good idea.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Rourke?
Mr. Bahu, go ahead.
Um, yes. So, you know, one last thing about the health and I, I discussed this a couple of meetings ago. We did have someone come in from the DEA that wants to volunteer their services and when we're talking about mental health, we must know that, you know, drugs can be a major issue, they could affect mental health regularly. So it would be nice if we could get some type of report on how we would be using the DEA to go ahead and assist and come speak to our students and how they can fulfill some thoughts and progressions into staying away from drugs. Thank you.
Eight point four, cafeteria highlights, May 2025. It's a pretty good report. I know, Mr. Bahu, is there, is it your Subcommittee on June 17th for the school improvement that we're going to discuss cafeteria stuff?
Yes.
Want to refer this to that meeting as well?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Mr. Bahu, seconded by Ms. Dougherty, all the fair say, I oppose motion passes. Eight point five, personnel report. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. School committee members, you have that report in your packet and Dr. Hall is here to take any questions. I believe the report has a variety of categories, including retirements, folks we celebrated earlier, resignations, new staffing and so forth.
Any questions, comments? Great. I'm motion to accept the reports to the superintendent, eight point one through eight point five is a report of progress by Ms. D'Rossi, seconded by Mr. Lay, all the fair say, I oppose motion passes. Section nine, new business, nine point one, budget reconsideration due to new funding as well as updates based on school committee questions. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. School committee members, you have, I believe, in your packet additional information, including, including responses to previous questions that were raised that are prior budget meetings and hearing. So we're ready to take any questions you have on that additional information. There are three actions I would recommend that we work on tonight. One is contingency for if we receive an additional $2 million that we anticipate receiving from the city in city cash. The contingency means we don't have that $2 million yet. It does seem likely that we will receive it in early July and it would be very helpful to have a contingency and to know that the school committee approves the spending of that $2 million, how you wish it to be spent. So there's a second item, which is to do with the suspense account and a third to do with items in abeyance. If I'm, so, so if I may, on the, on the contingency for the additional $2 million, the committee had previously asked for, I believe, Ms. Martin, a plan for a restoration of positions on a tiered basis. You have that in your packet tonight and that tiered restoration plan has a tier, tier three, that speaks specifically to receiving $2 million additional. For the most part, tier three restores all of the cut positions in schools, par professionals and tutors and so forth. And there are some additional items on there as well, including a district webmaster, which school committee members had put in abeyance, indicating you wanted to reconsider that position. So that is in there. There's one recommended change. The high school very much needs an additional special education position and so we're offering that position in place of another one that was in there originally. At any rate, if you care to ask any questions you wish, otherwise I'd like us to begin by focusing on the restoration of the positions in tier three and the items in tier three if, in fact, we do receive additional $2 million.
Ms. Dougherty?
Quick question through you to the superintendent. You mentioned the addition of a special education teacher from the high school. Are they taking something off from their originally proposed budget?
Yes. There was originally, where that is listed on your document tonight, there was originally a position of a scheduler, data, data analyst and scheduler. That position has already been accounted for. In other words, the work of that person has already been accounted for at the high school and they do not need it to be restored, but they very much need a special ed teacher.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. So overall, I do think that the tier three, bringing those, that list of positions back, I think makes really good sense and I can support that. I just had two quick questions. One was, you know, looking at the tier five, if we had been in that position, just a couple things. One was summer school. So for the $94,000, do we have any opportunity this year, much like we did last year? Is there any spending available within the current year that we'd be able to use towards that, towards the summer school spending?
Thank you for the question. If I may just say first, we, we are having summer school. I believe we're spending with the fiscal $26, I believe we've set aside something in the region of $600,000. And so it's, we're going to have this significant summer school, but just not everything we would otherwise. I don't, Dr. Pintle may wish to comment about, we're also very actively working these days on spending down our fiscal $25. It, it appears to me that we can't spend that funds for something that will occur in fiscal '26 unless it were supplies.
Right.
And so we, we can certainly look at that.
I mean, I think that's what I'm thinking. I mean, and obviously that's not a, you know, this is obviously a very personnel-heavy thing, everything we do is. But if there is any opportunity for us to be able to, I mean, we're talking days now to be able to make this happen, but if there were any supplies that were tied up in, in summer school, that would be the time to buy them.
Very prudent, thank you.
Yeah. My other question is around the early college, the $200,000 for the early college. Without that to spend, exactly how will that impact the program?
So it's a good question. The early college program will, will not be adversely affected for a couple of reasons. There's various iterations of it at this point. There, there's early college, early college independence, early college promise. So for early college, we are reimbursed by the state. So that's easy to say that with that, and that's the most, that's the most populated program. We encourage all high school students to consider early college and so, and we get state reimbursement. There is a program called Early College Promise, which that may have referred to. There are very few students lined up for that next year, we believe five, and we have, we will no difficulty supporting them through Early College Promise. We, it, the summary is, we are fully in support of all early college programs, be they Early College Promise, Early College Independence, or just the regular early college, and in fact are growing it.
Okay. That was my sense, so I'm certainly very, very glad to hear that and only here in Lowell would we can all come up with three names for the same thing, but there you go. Glad to see it. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Dougherty? Go ahead, hand up. Ms. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to say that I want to thank the City Council for releasing an extra $2 million to be, to restoring. But even though, even though, you know, it is a lot less than what we anticipate, I want to state the obvious, I want to say it again and again, that state legislatures made this Student Opportunity Act to give more money. And the reason that Lowell get a lot of money this year versus the towns around here, the towns around here are suffering because somehow they don't have the demographic as what we have here in Lowell. And because of demographic here we have in Lowell, Lowell get a lot of, a lot of money to, to help these students, the low-income, non-native language, English, English speaker and among many others, who, who needs a lot of help. And having a lot, having enough money to spend on helping these students is only to meet the minimum guidelines set by the state. So when we have a cut like this, still the money that ought to be spent on helping those students are still not, is still lacking. So I want, though I want to thanks for the $2 million released, but at the same time, So with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Mr. Bahu, you got something?
Yes, so thank you for tier three. It's very exciting that we could bring back the Twilight Program, some funding back to the Twilight Program, which is after-school and summer school programs and such like that. And realistically, you know, we have lots of sports. We have many different clubs in the Lowell School District. And I know when my kids went to high school as well as grade school, you know, it was art, art was something that was very important to them. It was part of growth. It was part of the kids that were sort of, you know, more artsy, more different, and having new ideas and something that they could go ahead and engage with themselves. So I'm just curious, would it be possible to re-support the afternoon in the arts? And I know tier, tier five is, you know, saying $100,000 in the afternoon in the arts, but tier four would, you know, maybe refund it for $69,000. So is there, is there a place that we could create to go ahead and create that afternoon art program for our students after school, which is probably pretty important when we, it means keeping them off the streets and engaging them and sort of being, offering something that, that is, something they can hold dear to themselves. So, you know, and I know that, you know, we've talked over the past couple of years about a district webmaster position, about eliminating and such, and I know that's pretty equal to that amount. So, you know, a general thought is, you know, is the district webmaster, you know, we were trying to cut it last year and maybe even trying to cut it this year, is it something that we absolutely need and that is assisting the school? I know that I get a lot of Facebook feeds, I get a lot of feeds from Lowell Public Schools, and ultimately, I don't know that the district webmaster is running it. To me, it seems more like our, I'm trying to think, the old Lowell Sun writer, Jen, Jen Myers has been doing a very effective job on that. So just curious what the committee may think on something like that.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'd like to speak about afternoon in the arts, if I may. Under the fiscal strain that we are under and have been under, afternoon in the arts made sense to cut back, not because we want to cut back any of the programming, but we found that the money set aside for afternoon in the arts was not being spent in the way it was intended. Ms. Doherty, I know, asked a question concerned about the band program. The band program is a really successful, and continuing to be successful and supported with our dollars, example of an after-school arts program, and so that's continuing. I think the, I think the original intent for afternoon in the arts was to support additional programming beyond the band program. But it happens that there are additional after-school programs in various schools, in almost all schools in Lowell, and they don't come to the high school for that as might have been intended. In other words, we can reduce the afternoon in the arts without reducing the programming that exists at the moment.
Thank you. I'd just like to point out, and the superintendent can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that in tier three, the one that was the $2 million restoration, the district webmaster position is one that you have brought forward to be eliminated. This is the second year that you've brought this one forward. I think that if we took that position out, we could fund not only, you know, more money for the afternoon in the arts, but the investment in K to eight athletics. I mean, these are, the way I look at it, and I'm taking your input, that you've thought this position for the last two years could be eliminated, but when we fund programs that directly engage our students, we know it gives them a reason to go to school, it gives them a reason to care about the school community and the work they're doing. And I love the band program. I thought it was fantastic. It was a great opportunity to get our middle school kids making music up at the high school, but it doesn't have to be at the high school, you're right. But I don't want to say, oh, we're going to give up the afternoon arts, we're going to give up the, I mean, I know it's not enough money to just eliminate one position, but to really have a focused, intentional effort on putting those funds towards these programs that help to engage our kids, especially at the middle school level.
Understood.
To me, I value that highly. I don't know how my colleagues feel about it, but it was a position that you recommended two times in a row that we could do without, and these other programs, I think, are very valuable for our students.
If I may, thank you very much. So first of all, Ms. Doherty and Mr. Bahu are correct. We did offer this position twice last year and this year. In both cases, school committee members spoke up in favor of retaining it. And this is a position that was in the original budget book that you received in May to be reduced, so no money was assigned to it. School committee members, someone offered, you know, concern about that, and it was put in abeyance. The reason it was added back in in this tier is that if the school committee chose to restore a position that's in abeyance, there's no money associated with it, and we'd have a jam trying to find out where else to cut. So rather than be in that jam, we offered it to the committee, and that's why it's there tonight. Second of all, if I may, if we work on tier three and make some different choices to that money, I'd love to come with some recommendations to you about some badly needed positions. One simple, that comes to mind right off, we have no director of English language learners in Lowell Public Schools. And that position has existed, it's been reduced because it's not filled at the moment, but that's a critical position for us to restore, and I could give you many other examples. Rather than us making it a quick decision to restore it for some purpose tonight, unless it's my purpose, then I would ask you to agree. But in other words, if you're going to make changes to what the plan is right here, we should give it some due consideration.
Miss Conway?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, it's Conway, I apologize. Ms. Martin, then it's Conway. You sure?
No, that's all right. That's all right, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Conway. So just a few quick things. One is, just to be clear, these are the recommendations that you made to us. We didn't make this up. You made these to us. So if we're looking to change them in 10 different ways, that's, I think we're a little late in the game to be doing that. I'm also going to make the distinction between, you know, the webmaster position is the person who's maintaining all the websites across the district. So every school has their own website, that's the person who's maintaining all of that. It is the first place parents go for information, it's the first place the public goes for information. It serves, I think, a very real purpose. I also appreciate the newsletters and the public relations work that gets done, but if we're, if we're, the only thing I can see in that would that we could be, combine those, those positions in some way. I wouldn't be comfortable getting rid of the person who's actually maintaining the actual sites and thinking that we can, we can make that up by having newsletters. So I just think they're two very different positions, serving very different roles. I think if we were looking at, within the tier three of a place where we can make a change, looking at the school-based spending allocations are things that have already been eliminated. Schools haven't made those expenditures. And I think that, again, big fan of, of the afternoon in the arts program and, and I'll let the middle school athletics, I'll support that too. Thank you, Dave, for laughing at that. But, I mean, you'd cover that by just eliminating giving extra money to the schools that they're not expecting anyway, that it's already been cut. So, I mean, it seems to me for that $157,000, you could, you know, go a long way towards maintaining those, those two programs at the middle school without having to sacrifice the maintenance of our websites or anything else at this point. I'd put that forth just as my own approach.
Superintendent?
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Again, that we will honor the wishes of the school committee, of course, again, around the impact of decisions you may make. The schools have made decisions on their budgets, and they put their budgets forward, and then the schools offered, they were asked to offer, what would they cut if we were short, and so they made these cuts. Some schools chose to cut a par professional or tutor and so on. Some schools chose to take money from their supplies budget that they may have budgeted for, let's say, new classroom supplies or new classroom equipment. If we made the decision, Ms. Martin, to remove those funds, the schools that had chosen to spend their money that way would be at a disadvantage over schools that had chosen to hire a par professional, because we've decided we're going to restore the positions, but not your supplies dollars. It's, it's still up for the school committee to approve or not approve, but I just wanted to point out that that would be the dynamic that we'd be dealing with.
Recognizing that's a challenging dynamic, can you tell me how that $157,000 is allocated out among, are we talking about three schools that each cut $50,000 from their budget? Or are we talking about 30 schools that each cut five?
Thank you. Dr. Pinto, do you care to estimate how many schools are accounted for in the supplies allocation?
So thank you for the question, Ms. Martin. I would need to go back and research that one because this was collected from 28 schools, and some had, they all had varying dollar amounts. There wasn't a standard amount across the board. It was a combination of personnel and supplies, so some small dollar amounts scattered over several, over several of the schools. So we'd need to go back, and I could generate, I could certainly generate that report for you.
I mean, I think we would find that there are some that are significant, that may warrant being spent, and there are some that maybe could be put off until even maybe later in the year when we have a better handle on what spending is. But I think that, you know, again, as a lump sum, to me, that seems like the lowest hanging fruit. That's my opinion.
Mr. Rossi, go ahead.
In my experience, in my years in Lowell Public Schools, certain schools have been able to provide stipends to certain teachers to run the school website. So that might be where some of that's allocated to. I'm not sure. But when I go to Lowell Public Schools and look for resources, I don't find a ton of resources available, whether I'm on any page. So I guess my point is, if we're just giving stipends to certain people in certain schools to run the website, then why are we paying for a webmaster if we're paying $157,000 elsewhere?
Ms. Doherty?
Just a quick question. How are you planning to maintain each school's website? Because I would agree with Ms. Martin, that's important for parents to be able to go on your school's website, whether you're finding out what's for lunch this week or whatever. How, what was your plan for making sure that every school's website is up and working? If for two years you recommended we don't need a webmaster, who is going to provide that backup?
The idea, Ms. Doherty, is that the, there are various people who can contribute. So as Ms. Rossi just identified, several schools have their own website manager. The city supports us. The city actually puts out the website templates and sort of manages that side of it. There are various people in the technology office who would be part of it. And I think, I've mentioned this to you before, we would anticipate a contract with a company that would also help with that, a contract that would come in at much, much less than the individual salary. So a combination of those factors would allow us to continue to manage the website.
And you were confident that it would not cause degradation in our, each school's website?
That's correct.
That we would be able to manage that so they would still be up and...
Yes.
Well, I mean, just in looking at, I, you know, because I said this to you when we spoke, I think that having a building-based substitute, I would, that doesn't seem like a priority position to me.
It depends on what the school's doing with that position. I don't disagree with what you're saying, but you know, this is where, if there's school-based decisions, we should have the school leader come and explain to us what they're doing with it. Ultimately, Mr. Mayor and school committee members, I'm happy to take additional questions. I would, it's interesting that we're still talking about a hypothetical, although highly anticipated additional $2 million won't be, likely won't be resolved until early in July, when the new fiscal year occurs. We believe that that's when we will have a final decision on this, and we would like your approval for what you agree to. So for example, one idea would be that you don't give us full approval to go on the full tier three, but you tell us which positions you do agree to restore, and that way we can alert the city. It will help us to restore the positions when we do have the funds.
If I could say something, you know, we went through the budget process over multiple meetings, these, the reason why these positions are in tiers is because that was the will of the school committee at the time, to put the money aside just in case we did get more money. So, you know, to go back and do it again now, once we already did it once, you know, I would just, I'd make a motion just to accept tiers one, two, and three for the $2 million, because that's what the school committee pressed at the time we did that budget.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor.
Do I want to second the first or not? Second to Ms. Martin, okay. Ms. Conway, go ahead.
So we're not going to, we're not going to find out about the $2 million until when?
We believe July 8th. July 8th is the first city council meeting of July. For various reasons, it will be helpful and, I think, necessary that they make the decision when we're in the next fiscal year rather than the current fiscal year.
I mean, it's kind of difficult to be making decisions when we don't know how much money is on the table or if it's going to be there, number one. The thing that, when we take a look at, and I understand what you, Mr. Superintendent, have talked about, well, this school wants that, and this school doesn't think that's important and so forth. I get that, but I also am concerned about consistency in our schools too. Where all of a sudden you have a principal that wraps on the door and says, oh, by the way, I know that we said that we wanted this, but, you know, once we get into the school year, we actually really need something else instead. That's why, again, when we don't have the consistency, you don't have that, you have, you have potentially a problem. Now, when you talk about the webmaster, what concerns me about it is the consistency. And I think that my colleagues mentioned that, you know, people get on there and they want to find out what's going on in the schools and so forth. And again, it's one person that's running the show, and there is a consistency to it. Unlike you have X amount of schools, and all of a sudden, you run into a problem with the, the website at a particular school, and now all of a sudden, you say, well, what's going on with that? Well, so-and-so was out on a maternity leave, or so-and-so was sick, or so-and-so got in an accident. And then all of a sudden, now you're shuffling to try to, you know, to block that hole. So I think that what I'm a little wary right now is that, that each school is going to do their own thing as far as the technology is concerned. I'd rather have some consistency with it. And, and there's no doubt about it, when we talked about the arts and, and sports, I mean, these are hooks that keep kids in school. I think we all know that. And as I've often said, they are some of the best dropout prevention programs that you can possibly find. You can have all the experts in the world coming in and trying to keep kids in school, but if you have that sport, or you have some type of arts that kids gravitate to, because what one kid likes, somebody else might not. And I think that's, you know, we have to be, we have to be aware of it. And I think this budget here, you know, I've gone through a lot of budgets. This has become a very complicated budget, much more than I've seen in, I don't know how many years, say, two. But the, I have another question here, and we'll continue on, but do we have, are there nurses that are being cut?
We've not received notice on that. We don't expect any school nurses to be cut.
Are there any sped nurses being cut?
No.
They're not? Okay, all right. Do we have any teachers being cut?
No.
No teachers? No nurses, no teachers?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. All right. And that's it for now, Mr....
If I may, Mr. Mayor and school committee members, in support of what Mr. Conway said about the consistency, and also, if I may say, about the complexity of the budget situation, supporting the motion that's on the floor at the moment would relieve the complexity. We'd have a decision tonight, and I think it's a worthy motion, want to support that motion and will follow with your approval.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. I'm willing to support the motion, but I feel like if there was a real need for a director of ELL, we should have, that should have been brought forward to us earlier.
It was.
It was brought forward?
Yes.
Oh, all right, I don't remember that.
We had difficult choices. I could, that's my one example tonight. I can go through my notes and share with you, we at the cabinet recently in anticipation, possibly of additional funds from the state. We have a, you know, give you a laundry list of other needs and, you know, each one more urgent than the next. We have lots of additional needs. I happen to mention that one, but there are many more.
Right.
And so, but it's a great question you ask, Ms. Doherty. Well, if that's so darn urgent and needed, why didn't it make it into the budget? Because there were other things that were more urgent than needed.
But the, you know, the tiers, Ms. Martin's motion was to put it in tiers based on your preferences. Like, if you had 1 million, if you had 2 million, if you had 3 million, and I don't feel like you've really done that.
Absolutely, we did that. We've absolutely...
Well, you've got the webmaster in here and that's a position...
Because, Ms. Doherty, when we put back the tiers, it was sensible for the superintendent to come back to the committee with the plan that the committee would be pleased with. We have members of the committee who continually say we need to support the classroom. There are, there are several cuts from central office that haven't been talked about since the day we made them. There are other positions being lost at central office, and we're not talking about those. The webmaster position was added back in on this tier because school committee members spoke up in favor of it. It was sensible to add it back in because if the committee wanted it back in and we didn't include it, we'd have to cut something else to put it there. So, we're trying to honor the wishes of the community, excuse me, of the committee, but absolutely, tier three that we're talking about is also my recommendation. Yes, it is.
I'm willing to support moving forward with tier three, whatever it is.
Ms. Lay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to add that I love the passion here that we, both of us, back and forth, both of you going back and forth on what's best to serve the students here. And obviously, obviously, I want to go back again, that the funding that we get, the money that we get from the states is obviously to support the student who needs the most. And these cuts hurt the student that we intend to hurt the most. The funding was intended to help those that in need, but we're cutting the program from those students that he, that needs the most. So, obviously, we need more money. $2 million is not enough.
Talk to your boss to about that.
Yeah, I think, I think they have, the state legislature have done a good job in term of putting a lot of emphasis on the demographic of the students here in Lowell. But if you look at, if you look at the, I don't want to, school versus the city, I mean, I don't want to go there, and I don't want people to think that is the way I'm going there, but it is obviously, the difference is, the city has every year decreasing the amount of money that contribute to the school. And right now, the state funding is more than 75% of our budget. So, that is a lot more than it has been in the past, but if the state could do get more money to the city in terms of to support the schools, I want 100% of that going to the school. So, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Chapter seven goes right to the schools. Mr. Rossi?
I am not in favor of supporting this motion because I feel like it's a what-if analysis. And if we don't get the money from the city and we've already secured certain positions to be face-to-face with our students, that's more important than anything. And additionally, you know, Superintendent Skinner and I talked about the literacy specialist position and restoring that, and if we desperately need a director of ELL, that should be top priority as well. And also, a human resource manager, we also have to add at $150,000. Do they know how Lowell works and how to work with the union and labor relations and how this city and how the schools function? I have so many questions, and this is a what-if analysis regardless. So, I will not be supporting this motion, and I'm sorry.
We'll call, I'm sorry.
One, just, one quick question through you, I would assume the superintendent. As time goes on in the school year and we find, after we've solidified the budget, and we find that perhaps we could cut somewhere else, save some money, and put it into something that was really needed. We might not have been able to afford it at that time, but when we look at it, we say, you know what? Perhaps we were wrong and we have to go and revisit that if we can turn around and cut somewhere else. Because again, when I take a look at the budget, you know, there's possibilities. I think everyone in here could probably cut something here and there, whatever it may be. But if we find that there is something that is extremely important and somehow we've overlooked it and we need it and it's evident, then we need to find, and we should be able to do that, by cutting somewhere else down the road. So, I want, I want to put that on the table, that it doesn't necessarily mean, it could be kind of on a floating premise here with the budget.
Thank you, Ms. Conway.
Thank you.
We'll call out clerk.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
No.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
No.
Five yeas, two nays.
Nine point two, vote to accept donation of...
Mr. Mayor, I'm very sorry. We've covered one piece of this, what, there's a second piece, at least one more piece, and it has to do with the suspense account. So, the school committee during the hearings chose to put certain positions in suspense, so we cannot move forward with them. If you would please, Mr. Mayor and the committee, I'd appreciate your attention to that matter so that we can go forward with our, with our planning or with your approval. So, you have in your packet, this is one that was delivered to you on Friday. Excuse me, it's in the budget book. In the budget book, and I can call this out to you, we have various positions in suspense.
Superintendent, just explain to me again, so there was $2 million under tier three. You're expecting $2 million to come from the city?
That's right. That's already been dealt with, Mr. Mayor. So, the items that are in the suspense account are items that are already in our budget, were already presented to the school committee, and the school, one or other school committee member decided that they would like us to hold off on spending the money that's in our budget until we resolve what to do, and so it's in suspense. So, we have some positions and we have some computer hardware that are in suspense, and we can't move forward with them unless we get approval from the committee.
So, regardless, Mr. Superintendent, the money's there for the whole year, until you release it?
That's correct.
So, it's already in the budget?
Excuse me, the money is already in the budget. There's not an issue with the money, none at all. But there is, but we can't spend the money without your approval. And so, for example, we have a coordinator of early childhood who we actually have in our presence tonight, that, whose position or the position of some staff members under her are in jeopardy unless we resolve this. There are computer hardware planned to restore computers and so on, that we need to resolve what to do with those funds, and we need school committee input and approval before we can move forward.
So, to approve the suspense account just goes back to the budget, allocates the money that we've already put in there?
That's correct.
All right. Is there a motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin? We'll call out clerk.
This is to restore the suspense account to the budget?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, can you say what the motion is?
This is... Okay, go ahead.
It's to restore the money from the suspense account into the budget, which we've already put into the budget.
That's correct.
Any position?
We are making changes to positions that are in suspense, like...
Yes. So, we went through the budget process and us as a committee put those positions into the suspense account?
Along with students.
Okay. Can we have a vote on this, please?
I think, I think what Mr. Rossi...
Do a vote first, then we'll go back to it.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
No.
Mr. Conway?
No.
Mr. Rossi?
No.
Four yeas, three nays.
So, Mr. Superintendent, can you give that, the job descriptions to Mr. Rossi, please? Go to the whole committee for the next meeting, something like that.
Certainly, for the next meeting?
Sure. Well, if you want to email it to everybody, that's fine.
Sure.
Nine point two, vote to accept donation of...
No.
Do you want to just say them?
No, it's fine.
Just list them for us so we'll know?
If you have them already up, go ahead. Do you have them? Okay.
You want me to say what's in suspense, Mr. Mayor?
No longer, but you tell what...
That's right, no longer in suspense, thank you. There's a literacy specialist position, there's some Twilight Program funds, there are funds for the coordinator of early childhood, there's some funds for both computer hardware and computer software, and there's a human resource manager. And the last item is that there's some funds, $150,000 for outstanding prior year expenses, what we've referred to in the past as bad bills.
So, if it's a newly created position, are they still coming for us to approve that position?
If any, if any new positions are created, we have to get approval for the job description and the spending from the school committee, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Bahu?
I just have one question about some of the technology, which is the page after the tiered restoration. So, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the superintendent. I'm looking at the, about the seventh line down, it's, looks like migration services of $150,000. So, if you could maybe share with us why this is needed? Is that her computer?
So, Mr. Bahu, we would need the director of technology to explain that item. I'm happy to offer that we will not spend on that item until we have him come and explain it, if that's helpful.
Well, yes, I think that would be good information to have because, you know, there's really not a lot, there's not a lot of information here, nor is there information about a $344,000 line item. This is staff device refresh of MacBook Air, one of five yearly. So, basically, what that indicates to me is this $344,000 annually for five successive years, which, which is something about staff devices of MacBook Airs, which is going to cost a school district $1.7 million. Now, I know that we're coming up on some tough times ahead. The city council did vote to restore $2 million for us, and we still all have our fingers crossed that that does happen. And I'm not entirely sure why, why we're spending, you know, $1.7 million or committing to $1.7 million over five years, and is that simply the staff or simply the staff? And does it have to be a MacBook Air? So, you know, there's some questions here that should be answered before, before I give them the stamp of approval. And those two line items, to me, stand right out.
If I may have Dr. Pinto explain, Mr. Bahu?
Be happy to.
Hi, Mr. Bahu, thanks. I'll just, I have a little bit of information to offer on that, so just wanted to let you know that the refresh is not necessarily for MacBook Airs. It was one of the recommended products by the technology director. There are other products that are under assessment that are of comparable value is one, so it's not necessarily MacBook Airs. This would provide refresh, a much-needed refresh for computers that have reached their end of life or are substantially old. So, in order to keep up with the times and to provide students with, to provide teachers with technology that's suitable in the performance of their duties, they'd need to have items that are newer than what they've got. Those are two things I'd raise right now, that we did, the delay of providing the refresh simply kicks the can down the road. So, what happens is we definitely have increased costs in terms of repairs and maintenance of existing devices, perhaps their end of life, parts may not be available, et cetera. So, this number is actually a reduced one from what was proposed by the director of technology initially to meet the needs of staff and students in the district.
If I may add, please, that if we, just in general terms, that we recognize that all staff and all students need devices today, it's the age we live in, and I believe we need to be responsible to provide for some refresh each fiscal year. So, we're not caught out with millions and millions of dollars in any one year that we, of course, may not have. The amount we're talking about here for computer hardware is $1 million. That's not, not exorbitant for any one year for a refresh. And then the second point is, this is all generalizations, but there's a classic trade-off between quality products and servicing. So, if we buy cheaper products, cheaper devices, we probably have to increase repair staff. And if we buy quality products, we get more life from them and we don't need as many repairs. That's something that we continually up against.
Ultimately, how many computers is this for? I mean, it's $1.7 million, and I'm not even sure if this is going to sustain exactly what we need for forever. I know that we have a one-to-one computer Chromebook ratio to each of our students, and does this have anything to do with that? And if so, how many grades does this cover? And how many grades will there be with that one-to-one ratio forthcoming four years ahead? So, this is something we sort of need to wrap our heads around before we just, you know, talk about refreshing. And I understand computers do lose, lose their abilities and capabilities, and they're not supported by the companies, but, you know, we're looking at $344,000 a year, which is, to me, a lot of money. It's $1.7 million, and does it cover everything? So, you indicated you may want to have the technology director in here. That might be more suitable than trying to figure out what this really entails.
Thank you.
As well as, you know, what that $150,000 migration services entails.
Thank you.
Is that a one-time fee? Is that, is that going to be a fee that's going to be annually? Is there something that I can do to restore arts? Is there something that I can do to restore K through eight, students playing sports? That's what's most important to me. And I understand the hardware is vital. The last thing we need to do is go ahead and be hacked, but, you know, there's an awful lot of expenses here that we should probably get some answers for.
Thank you. If I want to be clear with the committee, I hear what Mr. Bahu's concerns are. I believe they're worthy and deserve to be responded to. We can certainly arrange for the technology director to come to our very next meeting. The next meeting on the calendar right this moment is the third week of July, so that'll be July 16th. Just with the funds that we do have available and with the funds that the committee has already given us the leverage to use, we'll need to make some choices in order to provide for what's going to happen next school year. It doesn't mean we shouldn't be scrutinized. We should absolutely be held accountable for how we're making that spending, and we'll have the technology director here to do that. You might even, you know, inspire a change in... You might even, you know, inspire a, a change in the way we operate going forward if you have, if there's some different thinking that we need to incorporate. I just don't want to commit that we'll sit on our hands until the third week of July, then we wouldn't be providing for school to open. So, there's some, I, I'm acknowledging the concern, and I want to address it seriously. I also want us to be prepared to open school. We will not spend any funds that we've not been given the school committee approval for, but we will make, make some decisions with the funds that we have.
Sure. And I don't want to hold up production, nor do I want to hold up the school year, but it is something that we should definitely have a conversation about, because this is going to be an ongoing cost. And realistically, what percentage of computers is this $1.7 million covering over the next five years? Because, truthfully speaking, it could only be covering 25% of them.
We, you, all of your questions, Mr. Bahu, should be answered and will be. Thank you.
Moving on to 9.2, a vote to accept donation of $20,000 from the Billy Marcus Foundation for the daily school. Motion to accept by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Conway. Roll call.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi. Six days, one absent.
9.3, approval to accept and expand allocated FY25 award letter. Motion to approve by Mr. Lay, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi. Six days, one absent.
9.4, approval to accept and expand allocated FY25 awards. Motion to accept by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Bahu. Roll call.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi. Six days, one absent.
9.5, approval of new job descriptions and permission to post. Motion to approve by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Conway. Superintendent, what positions are these tonight?
Yes. So, it's a, if you don't mind, I appreciate you calling on me, Mr. Mayor. It's worthy of a, a quick explanation, because it's also a really good news story. So, in, in our attempts to address this, the difficulty recruiting and difficulty staffing, you, I think you know that we've been working with both Middlesex Community College and UMass Lowell to qualify staff, including qualifying people who do not have any degrees to get an associate's degree at Middlesex Community College, for example. The positions that you're dealing with right now, they're called, it's called lift-up RTAP apprentice. So, this is referring to a program at UMass with, a collaboration with UMass Lowell with, with Department of Education funding. So, it's grant-funded, where some of our paraprofessionals will be able to become an apprentice to a teacher next year. And in the next two years, they would apprentice with the teacher, they would take courses at UMass Lowell, and they would hopefully qualify to be teachers. At the same time, the grant provides that while this paraprofessional is doing that apprenticeship, we can fill their paraprofessional role with a new paraprofessional. And it doesn't cost anything to the district. It's, it's, it's grant-funded from DESI. So, it's a really terrific program. It's also very hopeful. It's a great collaboration with the university. It's also a very hopeful new offering for our staff members, paraprofessionals.
Mr. Doherty?
It's a fantastic way to grow our paraprofessionals into teachers. It's something we have been working on for years. It's wonderful. Motion to approve.
Yep, great. A roll call, Alan Clark?
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi. Six days, one absent.
9.6, request approval to transfer funds. Motion to transfer $1,299,715 to the Special Education Stabilization Fund by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call. I'm sorry, Ms. Martin, go ahead.
Quick question. So, I know we're limited as to how much we can actually put into the stabilization fund. Does this, with the, this contribution, where does that put us in, in terms of the cap?
Dr. Pinto, please.
And Ms. Martin, thank you. That's, it is actually the 2% of net school spending that we're eligible to put in, so we are putting in the maximum.
Roll call, Alan Clark?
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi. Six days, one absent.
9.7, budget modification request for approval. Motion to approve the budget modification of $3,824,46 by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Just want to give a quick explanation, Mr. Superintendent.
You're referring to the budget modification request?
Yeah, the $3 million.
Yeah. Dr. Pinto, please.
Thank you for that. So, this is just a, a part of the regular year-end cleanup, so we're moving funds to places where they belong. There are transfers in and transfers out. The transfers in are going into district sports specialists, after dark, and early college promise, instructional technology, employee health insurance, and then transfers out where there were unspent balances or reprioritized funds. They include photocopier and administrative tech services, some contracted services, some modular classroom rentals, and so on.
Thank you, Dr. Pinto. Roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi. Six days, one absent.
9.8, MIA waiver. Motion to approve the waiver by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi. Six days, one absent.
Section 10 convention conference request. We have four of them. I'll bundle and take one roll call. 10.1, overnight request Lowell High School, Toronto, Florida. 10.2, overnight request Lowell High School, the Yonkers, New York.